This is the Mendon Select Board. We will call the meeting to order at 5:32. Adding or deleting items to the agenda? I do not have anything to add.
I have one thing to add. The Municipal Energy Resilience Program, or otherwise known as MERP, M-E-R-P.
We will add the Municipal Energy Resilience Program under Business, letter E. I make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of MERP under Business.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Administrative Matters. First up is the signing of orders. And we have three. Make a motion to approve the check warrant for $10,641.89. And check warrant for $11,417.80.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Letter B. Minutes for June 2021. Special meeting for U.S. Route 4 and Local Concerns Meeting. June 27th. Will approve those minutes. You have a chance to look over those?
Yes, I looked over them and I seconded for both minutes.
So about only Lisa and Steph were at the June 21st special meeting?
Ah, so they tabled them.
So without Steph being here, we can table those? I just noticed that.
Thank you.
We can table the approval of those minutes and proceed with the 27th.
Sure. Make a motion to approve only June 27 minutes?
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I just wanted to recap. Was there any payroll that needed to be approved?
It was done already.
From the previous? We just approved two... Two checks.
Who approved two check warrants for payroll? Or...
Sorry. What was that, Sarah? What did you say?
That was payroll? The two, the $10,641.89 and the $11,417.80. That was payroll?
Yes.
Or check warrant?
Are these in please names? Yeah, that's payroll. Right?
Yeah, that's a payroll.
There should be two payroll and then a check warrant.
Or table together?
No, there's three separate.
I don't have the check warrant in front of me.
Yeah, it's a big packet there.
Yeah, right here. Thank you. Make a motion to approve the check warrant for $63,737.52.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. So we need one more payroll now?
You did the two payrolls and now you're turning the checks.
Okay, letter C. The year-end financials.
Okay, that would be me.
Thank you, Nancy.
So, you're welcome. You have, in front of you, increases in your termination. I'll go over with you some of this and the rest. We're not going to set the tax rate tonight. So I'm going to review this with you. Have you look at it. If you have any questions, let me know and I will answer them during the week. Overall, we actually had the budget surplus of about $172,000 this year. I don't expect that to change much, if any, but I want to finish reviewing everything before you actually set the tax rate at your next meeting. Of that $172,000, we ended up with a total of about $96,000 surplus, which was due to reduced expenses and added income from highway expenses. And then the other $76,000 were from miscellaneous things, such as reduced payroll expenses, lower overall office expenses, recreation, public safety expenses, higher-than-anticipated recording fees. We got more money for PILT. PILT is Payment in Loop of Taxes. And what that means is the state and federal government don't pay property taxes based on their values. They decide what the values are and they send us a particular amount of money each year. Each of those entities decide how much they think they go on us. And that is what we get each year from them. And then we also had about $24,000 more than we anticipated in interest because the interest rates have gone way up. Education tax rates have been set. The home step rate is, this year, will be 1.2005, which is 3 cents lower than last year, or about a 2.5 percent decrease. Non-home step rates are 1.3804, which is a nine... It's about a 9.5 cent increase over last year, which is about a 7.4 percent increase for those properties that are non-home step. My recommendations at this point would be that you roll at least $100,000 back into the budget as part of the highway, which you can automatically do because we're supposed to roll over highway funds anyhow. When you hire new employees, we may have some additional expenses if there are current employees working at the same time new employees might be working. That leaves about $72,000, which you can decide what to do with. You may want to choose something to do with it that would require voter approval in March. You may want to roll all of it back into the upcoming budget just based on current financial climate. That's something for you to think about before your next meeting next week. I should have the grant list probably by the middle of next week. And I will do as I usually do, saying this is what the tax rate will be if you roll X dollars back into the budget and so on and so forth. Some of the things that I pointed out, I'm not going to read them all to you. There's a two-pager that basically shows some of the big budget differences and some comments that I have regarding those. So if you look them over now, if you have any immediate questions or take your time and look at them later on. If you have any questions, you can email me or call me or stop by your office and I will be happy to talk to you about those. And then lastly is the Budget Status Report, which is the complete budget and the percentages that were over and under for this year. So that is my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm going to definitely have to sit down with you.
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, anytime.
So when the... At the end of the meeting, we'll schedule the data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sarah, you got those. I sent them a little bit late, but you should have gotten them, right?
I did. That was... I had to grab them off my desk.
Okay.
Okay, any questions there?
No.
Announcements.
Well, I'd just like to announce that I thank the staff and any volunteers in Mendon for their response over the last few days with the water and stuff. That's my only announcement. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, Vermont saw a huge... A lot of people came out to help, which was nice and quickly. But we will talk about that a little bit. Sarah, anything for announcements?
No.
Public comment. We don't have anyone here.
So Jessie and Nancy are present?
And our sheriff.
We have one resident online, Ashley Arnold. If you wish to speak during the public comment, you can do that now. All right. I don't see that she is unmuting herself, so we can continue.
Under Business. Letter A. The 911 officially naming legal trail number six.
That's me.
Jessie, thank you.
So legal trail number six is the Falls Road. And there are three buildings on there now, so I can officially name the road. I can unofficially Falls Road.
Right.
But I'm just looking to officially name it Falls Road.
What's that process, Sarah? How do we just make a motion to approve that?
Yes, motion to approve. And then Jessie will go forward with submitting the paperwork for 911 to update the address, update the addresses, and assign them a number off from the Falls Road, which will start at the intersection of Wheelerville Road and end at the intersection of the Nachter.
I will make a motion to name the legal trail number six officially the Falls Road.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Letter B. Attorney for Tax Sale.
So Nancy Merrill, the Illinois Tax Collector, has submitted five properties that she would like to hire the attorney in order to start the tax sale process. A summary of those budgets were emailed to you to give you an idea of what is owed. And she needs authorization from the town to spend and hire the attorney.
If I can just interrupt for a minute. Two of those, and Nancy is aware of this, so I'm assuming she will send them to the attorney, but two of those have contacted the office and they should be paid next week.
Great. Make a motion allowing Nancy Merrill to hire an attorney for the taxes.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that the same lawyer usually?
Yes, it's different.
Letter C. The road crew position update.
So to recap what the interview committee has taken action steps so far. And we opened up a two-week injur... or two-week application period that ended on June 30th. The town of Mendon received a total of three applications. And it was a decision from the interview committee that it doesn't represent a pool of people to... for each position. So we're re-advertising for another two-week period.
Would it be a good idea to advertise until the positions are filled?
We just wanted to set a deadline so that it encouraged people that it wasn't an open-ended thing, that they would submit an application in a timely fashion. So that's why we were putting that deadline on there.
Any questions? Letter D. Is the recent flooding event taking place in Vermont.
Okay. I will provide a recap of that. First of all, we're happy to report that the town of Mendon did not receive significant impact. And our thoughts and hearts go out to the communities in Vermont that are dealing with major damage from this flooding event. As a town, we have offered assistance through the regional planning commission for those communities that are struggling to reach out if we can assist in any way, either on the highway department or with the expertise that we have with our office staff to guide them or answering questions as we have great experience with FEMA and unfortunately, disaster will exist. The governor first declared a state of emergency over the weekend. And then the disaster declaration was submitted to the president today regarding the time period between July 7th and July 12th. There is continued concern with the rains that are coming in as we speak, that there could be additional flooding. So we are continuing to monitor that situation and how the roads hold up. At this time, there is a severe thunderstorm watch for Mendon and mainly Olivermont with up to 70 mile an hour winds, up to one-inch hail, and one to two inches of rain and crevices. That goes till 2:00 a.m. on Friday, the severe thunderstorm watch. So, or the flooding watch goes till 2:00 a.m. Daily, the state has invested their emergency operations center. The Department of Public Safety conducts a situational awareness meeting every day at 1:00 p.m. in which representatives from the town is monitoring and bringing back information to the town. We are also disseminating information on our social media pages and websites to get the word out there for any type of information that the state wants distributed, whether it be personal assistance with how to deal with floodwaters or state municipal information about how to handle the disaster with anticipating working with FEMA. So I encourage officials, staff, and the residents of Mendon, visitors alike, to monitor our Facebook page, Town of Mendon Facebook page, front porch forum, and our website to link to different information that the state wants to get out there. So we haven't had a lot of damage in Mendon to date, but we are concerned with the forecast going forward. And that is the update.
Thank you.
And quickly, I thought it was... It was interesting how, going back to the volume of volunteers that Vermont had reaching out to also check out the links so that you could be properly placed. And thank you to all volunteers.
Yeah, maybe I can just make an announcement so that we can get that in the minutes as well. So if anyone wants to volunteer, they can go to vermont.gov/volunteers and you can sign up to do a number of things. So it could be whatever you feel that you need. The state will put those resources with towns that have reached out that they need assistance. So we encourage anybody that wants to help. This is the way that they start to volunteer to help. There's a number of organizations financed that are accepting financial assistance if they want to donate money. One being the American Red Cross. The second, which you can do that anyway. And then there's other organizations that we listed. I believe we posted it on our website now that is accepting donations for recovery. We encourage anybody that wants to help a business to contact that business that might have been affected and see if you can purchase gift cards to be used at a later date. This provides businesses with income now as they are struggling to get back open. So there's some different ideas that they... that individuals can get involved with disaster recovery. Going forward, if you... if anyone experiences any damage to their homes or witnesses any damage, you can report that to 211. You just dial 211. It's going to go to the state information center. And you can report any damage that you witnessed, either on the roads or if you have individual damage to your businesses or residential property, you dial 211 to get that information submitted. As we travel around Vermont, the most up-to-date information regarding state and federal highways is at 511. So you can go either online to 211 or 511. And you will see the latest traffic information regarding the closure of roads. Currently, this state of Vermont is down to only 22 highways that are still closed from the original event. So we hope that will continue into tomorrow as we get these severe thunderstorms rolling through. But 511 is your greatest resource. It will not give you information per se on municipal roads, but it will tell you about the state highways.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next. Were there any questions regarding that? Letter E. Our added item, the MERP, Municipal Energy Resilience Program.
This program is an audit of an energy audit that for our municipality. So that would be the town office and the town garage. We... The town office was built in 2005. And the town garage was 1984. We performed a number of energy improvements even to the town office that was more recently constructed by improving the energy efficient lighting. And we've installed two heat pumps at the office. At the garage, we've done a number of things over the years as far as replacing lighting to energy efficient lighting, installing a heat pump in the office of the garage, and updating the propane heaters that would... the large heaters that heat the entire garage. This audit would... There's two different levels of the audit. There's a basic audit, which I'm not sure would provide a huge amount of information from what we've already done. But it could. Versus the full audit, the level-two audit, might look at additional improvements to the buildings, maybe switching over to solar and energy source. The application needs to be submitted in the next two weeks. And we have discovered as... with all of the staff that we're unable to fulfill that deadline. So for the level-two audit, they need... The level-one audit is very basic and that application can be submitted within a few days. The level-two audit requires a bunch of research background information submitted along with the application process. And it's much more detailed. So I wanted to present it to you both. The Select Board has provided information to me regarding this application. And so I think you might both be in support of applying for these funds or... But I wanted to give you the updated statistics if you have any questions because it drives what work will be going through next week.
Okay, so we would not be eligible... We would not meet the timeline for level-two and any of those funds or anything, correct?
With the current staff, we cannot submit an application within two.
Okay. So we would apply for the basic audit? And of that, how much of that have we already done in previous years? And like, what's left?
Well, that's the question. And the audit would tell us that, but I'm not sure... I'm not sure it's going to give us a lot of additional energy improvements going forward.
Okay. So are we talking major money here? Or... Because what I'm trying to ask is, is it viable or functional that we use staff time for a audit that may not produce anything?
It's of no cost. Is that correct?
So this is a grant that has no matching requirements. I will try to get more information from regional planning commission on what that level-one audit is expected to come back with recommendations. Because if it is recommendations to energy efficient lighting and heat, we've already taken those steps.
I believe from what I saw today, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, because we just looked very briefly, that the energy audit needs to be completed in order to apply for the next step, which is like a $4,000 grant.
So you'd have to do the basic audit...
Some kind of audit, yeah.
First, to apply for the $4,000 grant.
The way I understand it.
Yeah, I believe that's right. You have to do the initial assessment before you... You have to do the initial assessment before you can apply for any construction fund.
So you're telling, you're saying that it's worth doing, right? Because.
I think the level one is worth submitting here. And that, the level one can be submitted before the end of next year.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right, if there's nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:03 p.m.
Second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.